Okay. We'll call the meeting to order. It's November thirteenth, 2013, 5:05 PM. And 2.0, adjustments to the agenda. Does anyone have anything? And you'll note that for our discussion matters, it says none. It's what we did is we wanted to allow time for further discussion with Laura Sora's related to healthcare reform. So, we're just going to skip over that, but we wanted to keep it as a placeholder on the agenda. 3.0, audience and communications. Seeing there's none, we'll move to 4.0, presentations. And 4.1, the supervisory union core budget and decision packages. And this is Bob Mason's show.
Yeah, which lights? One of these two switches, right? There. Okay. Okay, so the first chart you're very familiar with. It's how we begin each of these. We're talking core services tonight, not purchase services. This is a PowerPoint representation of the slides you have in front of you, or the handout you have in front of you, with the dollars by category within core services. If I was a board member, I would look at those numbers and wonder what's going on right there. You see the 232 percent increase in your expenses as a board?
Must have something to do with legislation.
It has nothing to do with the stipend you generously get for your countless hours you devote to the children of this area of the county. It has everything to do with legislation that moves the recording of audit services and the payment thereof from member districts to the SU. So, this year and next year, the checks to pay Father Gil Segali, well, not next year, the checks to pay your auditors are written out of CSSU and assessed back to you. So, they're recorded here and on your own financial statements locally, you'll see a CSSU assessment for audit services rather than a payment to your auditors. So, they're recorded both places now. Yes, Lorna?
This might be a ridiculous question. What is the thing on legislation?
It's Act 153.
Well, it's the well-intentioned part of the legislation is the law was modified to require all school districts to audit all districts, or they required all districts to be audited annually in the state of Vermont. And in the past, that necessarily wasn't the requirement. So, although you had been auditing your districts since dirt every year, there's a number of school districts that haven't until this year. And then, in general, there's a legislative direction that kind of moves stuff towards the SU via audit services, special ed, whatever. So, this is all part of that. Have I done?
Yeah.
Have I done the legislative justice?
Yeah.
Other questions? The rest of the lines of the budget are in assets built using the assumptions you all looked at in August, September, and October. It's an essence salary and benefit adjustments for existing staff and same expenses in all other lines. And that's what that slide says. Okay, on my crisp capturing of any changes you have in front of you?
This isn't the time to ask it. It's fine, but how could executive administration go down then unless we cut somebody's salary?
Because someone on the executive administration group might have changed their benefit elections with the exiting of certain children from the homicide.
Now, who would that be?
I can't think.
Congratulations.
I think it's a hip or a furb violation. Okay, with that one?
But thank God they were 26 and over.
Okay, these are remaining budget modifications that need to be made in your baseline documents that we don't have yet, have final information to do that. You all have seen the correspondence on V high rate increases. You have 15 in your budgets currently. You've been advised that it's likely they'll be closer to 4.5, and that final numbers will be out.
Just talked to the department today, maybe next week.
Okay. Other adjustments, you know many of your expenses are apportioned back to your schools based on final published ADM numbers out of the Agency of Education. We kept those mid-December, so we'll make those adjustments. And then, the group is going to ask you to consider two decision packets this year. Molly will give you a couple of comments on the ELL decision packet.
Certainly. Just both an increase this year and anticipated for next year in both enrollment overall and also the level of need of the new arrivals over the past year that I've been tracking is quite substantially different and requires more times per week that they receive direct service.
And just as a reminder, we do, this is a decision packet, but this is a responsibility that we have based on the assessments that we do for these kids. So, calling it a decision packet is interesting.
A quick question, Molly. Do we have, sorry, do we have an increase in languages that we're serving or more in the need or both?
We, both. More in the number of language, an increase in the number of students arriving having never been to a formal school setting, which complicates their ability to learn because the whole environment is foreign. And more, an increased number in students who arrive with no English whatsoever, whereas the past pattern for the last four years while I've been here has not seen such an increase until the last year, and I see that on the rise. I can tell you that ABS has 14 languages now, different languages. Shelburne has 10, Williston Central has 10, Heinsburg has 6, and CBU has 12.
And the ages, it's our pre-K 12?
Pre-K 12, we're not at the moment serving pre-K. That would be a long-term goal to have, but we don't, we can't, we can't do it right now. And it's not part of our requirement. So, our ELL teachers consult with our triple E teachers, but they can't provide the direct service.
Okay, the other decision packet is access, and Eddie is going to come in front of you. I will bring your attention to your FMR, which noted relative to access performance for the first quarter, the last sentence, longer term, the challenge for the program is the fragility of revenue as none of their revenue is budget-based, that being Duncan and Eddie's. It may be time to consider a change at either CSSU or CBU as we begin budgeting for 1415. Eddie thought it would be good to start with CSSU. So, he's going to come to you looking for some help to get some budget money for access. Okay, on that one?
It's likely that the request will be for some, for a specific purpose. So, it's not just an open-ended, we need this much money just to take care of the bottom line. It will be for a particular initiative that they do.
Okay, the next two slides are a follow-up to the conversation you had last month. We touched on the subject of CY, and I honestly was not the best at reflecting on a journey you as a board and we as administrators went on since last October, particularly when probed with relevant questions by your Jean Jensen. So, I've done, I've done a recap of that journey in two slides. This is the board's journey last year. You deliberated at length, my language, in December 2012. And the topics of conversation were assessment options you may have, how could you spread CY costs back among your schools in a different way than you do today or prior, which was ADM K-12. You looked at expense and revenue budget options. Prior to this current year, you recorded just the gift or support you gave CY on the books. We had you discuss how conservative Christine should be with revenue. And lastly, how quickly should we move to whatever place we define? Your debate ended, and you did the following, in case you missed it. You asked it for 1314, to have all expenses of the program recorded on the books, all revenue recorded on the books, but have it be a conservative revenue statement. We presented that information all to you, and it was difficult for certain boards to accept it, i.e. those boards who saw a dramatic increase in costs. So, you asked Mike and I to head us in that direction, but go about halfway. So, whatever the adjustment for CBU would have been, we were asked to take it down by half or up by half, depending on whether it was rep positive or negative. So, that's where you landed for 1314. And then, you asked the administration to pursue a purchased services model, similar to how you allocate costs in the bottom half of your budget today. So, your administrative team, when it says admin here, that would principally be Megan, Bob, and Michael, developed a purchased services model, and Cindy, excuse me, in December and January, shared it with the administrative team, Elaine's staff of all principles, both in February and March, incorporated any changes that came out of those conversations, and then moved it into the 2014-15 assumptions that you all saw in August of this last summer, and then incorporated into the baseline documents that you have here. Okay? The details across CY look like this. And, oh, do you all have a copy that you can see it on? This isn't going to, okay. Okay, what all this does is just separates revenue, or excuse me, expenses by school, primarily where it's staff, it's the people in your school and the staff, or the per-day expense to support them. So, we add, put all the expenses by school. We allocate overall program management expense across all five schools that it supports. We allocate revenue, or we collect revenue and then allocate revenue using two mechanisms by school. One is if the grant that the revenue is from targets the revenue to support a particular program that runs in one school and not necessarily in others, we put that revenue in that school. So, for example, CBU has some revenue coming in that supports work that only goes on at CBU. So, with that, we note that when we allocate revenue. And then, just above it, we allocate other revenue based on the size of the program in each school comparatively. So, you okay with how Christine and all of us built that table? Here with the results? Yes?
What's DOH?
Department of Health.
And can you explain school-based tobacco?
School-based tobacco grant. It's a grant from the Department of Health.
Department of Health, for what reasons? Anti-smoking?
Smoking cigarettes.
Isn't it all the money that the state had as a result of the settlement with cigarette maniacs?
Thank you.
Okay, so, if you take on the previous page, the costs by school and the revenue by school, you come up with net costs. The first question you as a board might ask is how does that compare with the current year's costs? So, we put this on the table. And then, this is the increase-decrease that you see in your baseline budgets as a result of the work we did with the CY.
If we had not asked to separate out the K-4, the KH would be paying a lot, like, we wanted to change the formula because it seemed like most of CY goes for older kids.
Yes.
But in reality, we're paying $10,000 more this coming year, even though we're only paying for fifth through eighth grade in Charlotte.
Well, I don't know the answer to your question, because what I don't have on this sheet is what your assessment would have been under the old methodology, which is pre-K to 12. This is that half-step that you agreed to for the current year. So, what this says is based on a 5 to 12 ADM, you're paying, you would be paying more using a 5 to 12 ADM allocation versus a, for services delivered, if you will.
I think part of what you're saying is it appears that there's, there are more services in the K-8 buildings than we had thought there were. I mean, that's sort of the impression I.
Because, I mean, it should be that we're paying less this year, or for the upcoming year than the last year since we were phasing in the change, but we end up, you know, that's a big bump for us, almost $1,000.
Yeah, and I haven't done, the Bob answer to your question would be, the methodologies is different, are different. This collects costs and allocates them by ADM for a significant grade. This doesn't do that. This one collects it by where the services are delivered.
But for our budget, we have to come up with an extra $11,000.
Yeah. And it's in the documents that you have as you start.
Where, so you've got, you've got a benefit last year?
Oh, and for many years, apparently. I don't.
Right. At the, at the local level, will each board have the opportunity to just make decisions related to CY services?
As they do every year, but whether they're in or out.
Yeah.
I mean, they won't, I know no mechanism you're going to have to vote on $11,000 in Charlotte. If you elect to place on your agenda for board consideration whether you're going to continue to participate in CY, that, that conversation can be had at a local level. Yes, Joan?
There are requirements to deliver the kind of services that CY delivers, whether we wrap that in the health curriculum or whatever. So, it's a bigger piece than just coming out of one.
That's related to Megan's presentation last time.
Yes.
Remember, comprehensive health. I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, Bob, but what the bottom line shows is that some people have had more services delivered by CY over the years than others comparatively. And when you then do it as a purchase service, you're going to pay for those services. Now, would people have an option to say, okay, well, maybe we don't need three days of such-and-such? Yes or no?
You can, you can have that conversation, but I wouldn't have it as a board without Christine present, because there's a mix of both what Joan touched on, where there's resources that if you pull out of CY, you have to go get those services somewhere else because you can't not have them. There are some discretionary services that some schools have chosen to be more extensive in their pursuit of, the mentoring program, for example, is one under that category. So, the conversation could be, have it, I'd have it with Christine at the table. I wouldn't, you're going to get into trouble if you wing it on your own.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, on our side, our tangent into CY. This is what you're going to do the rest of the budget process on November 20th, which comes up quickly next week. You're going to review the second half of the budget, the purchase services side. We're going to show you assessments in detail, and we're going to give you the detail necessary to consider the two decision packets that we mentioned already. And then, you've got a final budget meeting on December 8th, just before the holidays to preliminarily adopt your budget. Yes?
And so, we'll hear about access next week? Is that correct?
Yes.
Does anyone have questions for Bob?
Thank you, Bob.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay. We're at reports to the board, 5.0. 5.1, the central office leadership team report, Elaine?
I just hope that all of you, especially after we just had the little brief presentation by Molly around English language learning, read the piece that Molly put in the COLT report about the number of languages, the number of, the higher needs that there are. I think she did a really good job. We have 114 students now who are ELL, so every year, there are more, and every year, the need is greater. I have a couple of recognitions here to announce. Apparently, these were done at the VSBA regional meeting earlier this fall, and a couple of people weren't there, but they're being recognized. David Rath for five years of service. Congratulations, David. Pass that down. Lisa Falconi for five years of service. Thank you, Lisa. And Leah Craviti, who was on the high school board, so we'll make sure I'll pass this down to David.
My, how time flies when you have him.
I know. Exactly. No, thank you.
It only felt like 15.
It only felt like 15, right. Thank you.
It's great. I mean, as you all know, that it takes a few years to kind of get in the rhythm of what the boards is all about, and so, your long-term service, all of you in here, it's very much appreciated, I know, by our community, so thank you. Okay. Are there any questions related to the central office leadership team report that was in your packet? We're trying not to go through everything, but if there are questions for Elaine, this is a good time. Okay, thank you. 5.2, the first quarter financial management report.
It's in your packet. I'm willing to entertain any questions you might have on it. I do understand that the, the financial statements for the SU are difficult to absorb because so much, a half of what you do as a, as an SU gets a portion directly back to school. So, I tried this time, for the first time, to capture those things that are just going to be shared backwards, like ELL, we've talked about already, and those things that truly are to be noted as underrun or overrun, that's going to be yours when the year ends. So, the top half of stuff that gets passed back, audit services, food services in ELL, the bottom bullets are the ones that really are resident there and feel more like true underrun or overrun, if you will. So, transportation is running favorable, but you all know transportation moves like special ed through the year as a result of services being requested and being run. So, I wouldn't necessarily spend $23,000 tomorrow. Salary costs and health benefits were adjusted in OT, and as we've already mentioned, health costs are running favorable in both exec admin and fiscal due to changes in selections. Christine is running ahead of schedule, which we are not surprised by relative to revenue. You purposely put in a conservative revenue statement, and it looks like she's going to be able to meet or exceed that as the year ends. Any questions?
Questions for Bob?
Thank you.
Okay. Wow, we're really moving along. Okay, 5.3, Act 153. Was this related to the special ed?
It is, and this is really just quick giving you context. You have an action matter today to, last month, when you discussed whether or not the SU board would decide to keep care of professionals in your buildings or move them to the SU. The administration's recommendation was to keep them in their local buildings, and tonight, you're taking action on that. So, that's, that's really all that is for, for tonight.
I'm just curious, did any board have an interesting discussion on that? And we just sort of accepted the recommendation, but.
Any questions for Molly? You'll have an opportunity to ask questions again before we take action. Thank you, Molly. 6.0, discussion matters. We're moving past that, just to allow for more time for common topic. So, 7.0, action matters. 7.1, approve the special ed par educator placement. And so, we need a motion to approve leaving the special ed par educators in the local budgets and hiring from the local district. Is there a second? Discussion? Questions? Okay. Other questions? All those in favor of leaving the par educators to be hired from the local district, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? One abstention. Okay, motion carries? 7.2, need a motion to accept the independent audits. And we'll have a second, then we'll have discussion. Is there a motion?
So, move.
A second?
A second.
Okay, discussion, you, there were, there's a lot of volume and material, so you don't have it in your packet. You'd have to go to the website and click on the links to open them. There were a few of us from the board that met with Bob Mason, Mike Nado, so Kelly Sayer, Joan Lenis, Jean Jensen, and I met with Mike Nado, Bob Mason, and Sheila Valley from Father Gil Segali and Valley.
You did get to say it again.
I'll say it one more time.
One more time.
So, that was, that was last week, I believe, that we met with them and went through the audience, went through the audits. So, Bob, if you want to highlight anything?
My executive summary would say, be aware, the law changed. We're doing this to be in compliance with law, this movement of where we record them and who approves them. The audits continue to look strong and worthy of envy if you're in another SU across the state. And I brought to your attention the fund balance notes at the, at the tail end to say there's a reason for some of you to have a different conversation than others when you get together in January, to talk about using fund balance as revenue for future years. And then, finally, I'd applaud the, the work that Mike and people in my office and each of your bookkeepers do to run an extremely tight ship relative to how you're spending taxpayers' money. We, we get very few adjustments that we needed to make to the books when we present them to your auditors, and that's a clear signal of the quality of the work that they do. So, with that, I'll entertain any questions.
So, just to reiterate Bob's point, I mean, Sheila Valley is very pleased with how tightly the ship gets run within our SU and how it makes it easy to move that through the auditing process. Joan?
That's what I was going to say. Beyond just saying what a good job it's been to every, I see it from different school districts, and sometimes we take it for granted that we're so smoothly run, and just to acknowledge that, that it comes at a lot of effort, putting it into making it look smoothly run. So, for me, thank you.
Jean, you want to?
Only just to add that the key purposes of the audit is to make sure that the finances that go out in the annual report to the public are representative of truth. So, it's not an audit like pulling, well, they do this a little bit, it's not an audit of pulling a P.O. and making sure, it's not testing, it's to make sure that it's accurate. So, when you read this and you say, see that there were, you know, five minor entry corrections, it's because by strict accounting principles, it was in one bucket, it should have been in another, but it didn't change what the public saw in the annual report. So, that's, so we just, we did spend time going through them. We asked a lot of questions and wanted to know what they were and making sure that they were all being corrected, and there was really no concerns.
And I think one of the, the takeaways for us is like, you know, the, the next step that we would need to be paying attention to related to fund balance, and that's a really a local discussion about how each district manages their fund balance and how much to apply to next year's revenue to offset taxes, or how much to maintain at the local. But, you know, that, that didn't really have anything to do with the audit process, it's just something that came to our attention as we were going through it. Are there, are there questions for Bob? Okay. So, we've got a motion to, on the floor, to accept the independent audits. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. The motion carries. 7.3, a motion to approve anticipated .50 FTE ELL position. Is there a motion?
Yeah.
In a second?
Second.
Second.
And I believe this is for Shelburne, but it needs to be approved through the C S S U board because of, the hiring comes out of C S S U.
So, I need tiny portion for Shelburne as well.
Okay.
Someone from our side.
And it's in relation to service needs for students. Any questions for Molly? Okay. All those in favor of approving the point five oh F T E E L L position, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The motion carries. Consent agenda, eight point oh. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? In a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, the motion carries. Nine point oh, our next meeting dates. We have the November twentieth. We've scheduled an executive session for negotiations before our six o'clock budget meeting. So, as you talk to your fellow board members in the local boards, that executive session is for all board members, just a reminder. So, that's going to be at five thirty. And then, our C S S U meeting at six o'clock. And we may want to do an R S V P, Sandy, at some point, just to make sure we've got enough room in the room, if we have thirty-four board members show up. And then, just another reminder to the board, the negotiations team is meeting next Tuesday in Charlotte. And we'll discuss this in executive session, but just a reminder that that's open to other board members to come and observe if that's of interest. It's a different location, and that's next Tuesday. And we'll get a reminder out to you for that.
On November twenty-third, C S S U?
Yes.
Yes.
And the eighteenth, is it five thirty?
December eighteenth, yes.
Is that six?
Usually, five thirty is the normal time. The other one is at six, so that we could have the executive session before.
Sure. Okay. And then, the board chair is November nineteenth. And I sent an email related to some different committees' work. I'm going to send an email again as a reminder, and we're changing the superintendent eval date. Deb, I know you couldn't have made that Monday. We're moving it to the next Tuesday. But I'll send an email out again with dates of committee work. And we've got, like, three meetings related to superintendent evaluation, administrative comp, and...
Legislative breakfast.
And legislative breakfast. Thank you. And that one we'll do online. Okay. So, we're at ten point oh, common topics. So, Laura, when you're ready, you can set yourself up. So, we're, as Laura gets set up, just like to welcome her to coming to our board and chatting with us. Some of us were at the Vermont School Board Association Regional Meeting a month or so ago. And Laura did an excellent presentation related to the healthcare reform and insurance and what that will mean, possibly mean for boards and so forth. Laura, your title is Executive Director of V I H I?
I am President of the Vermont School Board Insurance Trust, which is synonymous with Executive Director. And I manage V I H I jointly with the Vermont N E A.
Thank you. I should have made note of that. So, when, Laura, when you're ready... So, we've got a few more board members coming in. So, they're going to grab a bite and grab some water if they need it. Laura's going to get herself settled.
One is a copy of the present, the presentation that I'll be having on the screen. And the other is a employer penalty flow chart that I'll reference during the conversation. And what I have found works best is if you'll let me go through the presentation without questions, and then, I'll have time, as much time as your schedule allows, to answer questions afterwards. So, if that makes sense. So, let's just see if I'm good, the technology. So, I also have just a few of a guide that I'll talk about later in the presentation that V I H I put out, but this is also on the V I H I website, downloadable. And I know that Colleen came home with a couple of them. So, I'll have those up here for those that are interested as well. But I did not bring enough for everybody. So, the Affordable Care Act, which is in news quite a bit lately, was passed in two thousand and ten and was designed to have access to affordable health coverage for all Americans. So, that's really the lens through which all of the decisions that are getting made is seen through. And I'm going to tell you today, sort of, what the Affordable Care Act is trying to accomplish broadly, how that impacts us as schools, how Vermont, what Vermont has done, which is in addition to the Affordable Care Act, and what that means for us as schools, how V I H I, the Vermont Education Health Initiative, has been required to respond to these changes and how we're continuing to evolve in order to help schools address these healthcare challenges. I will tell you a couple of things, that we are in the middle, or maybe even not yet quite to the middle, of a transformation of healthcare in this country. So, I project that we will not really be settled into a new healthcare environment for maybe six or seven years. It's going to take a while for this all to play out, and we get to live through this transformation, which is challenging, but not necessarily bad. It just means that we need to be informed in a different way and pay attention in a different way and start to have some different conversations than we've had in the past. So, I'm a school board member from Randolph. I've been on the board for twenty years. And I've come and spoken to you in other roles before. In my role as President of Visbit, I jointly manage the V I H I, the Vermont Health Insurance Initiative. All public schools in Vermont have purchased their health plans through V I H I, at least since two thousand, some going back to nineteen eighty-four, when the health program was first started. And there are really just two things that we as school boards have worried about in health insurance for at least the last twenty years that I've been involved. One is, how much is the rate going up? So, what do we have to put in our budget? And the second is, what's the premium cost share between the employer and the employee? And most districts that I'm familiar with have, over the last at least decade, tried to have the employees pick up more share of their health premium at the bargaining table. And usually, point by point, we have tried to move that number. We think that, at least for professional staff, for the teachers, it's about an eighty-five, fifteen percent cost share is the national, or the state average. So, that's the environment. It's been pretty easy. We had V I H I plans. We knew that V I H I protected us from the private insurance market and having to go directly to carriers every year and pick plans. Our employees were comfortable with it. We only had to think about those two things, and everything else sort of got taken care of. We don't have that luxury anymore. So, I'm here to help you think about what you need to take care of, hopefully, not get too far into the weeds. But because we as boards negotiate around healthcare, we do need to know more about healthcare than we ever had to before. So, the Affordable Care Act requires each state to set up an exchange. As you know, there are thirty-six states that let the federal government do it on their behalf. Vermont is not one of those. We set up our own exchange called the Vermont Health Connect. It's now open for business. The plans will start in January. As you heard, we have had some challenges in that process in here in Vermont with our exchange. What you hear in the national news is not about our exchange, but sometimes, you wouldn't know that because we've had, it echoed here in Vermont. One of the things that you've also heard a lot about in the news lately is President Obama said, if you like your health plan, you can keep it. And now, people are questioning whether that was really true. Well, it was true, at least in a narrow sense, in that every plan that existed in March of two thousand and ten that did some things and didn't do other things, got to be grandfathered. There were a lot of plans in the country that would have had to do a lot of dramatic things in order to keep that grandfathered status. That was not true for V I H I. We basically were very close to meeting the requirements to stay grandfathered. And so, through no particular wisdom, Mark Hage from the Vermont N E A and Joe Zimmerman for Zib, from Visbit, who were jointly managing V I H I at that time, just kept the grandfathered status. There was no particular reason not to. And that becomes important in Vermont. Large employers under the A C A have a new responsibility. Large employers must contribute to health coverage in some way. And I'll talk a little bit more about that. Individuals have a mandate to have health coverage. This is what the Supreme Court upheld. If you don't have health coverage as an individual, now, as of next March, you have to pay a penalty. It starts out modest, but it will grow over time. Medicaid can be expanded at the state option. The Supreme Court said it had to be at state option. Vermont has expanded its Medicaid program, so there are more Vermonters who qualify under that program. And there are federal dollars that will help some individuals on the exchange by their health insurance. They only help as individuals. So, the employees that you have, that you sponsor a plan for, that are on your plan, don't get access to those federal dollars. So, broadly, that's what the A C A is working to accomplish. And there are compliance issues for schools. There are things that we have to think about. There's notifications and reporting requirements. So, we had to send out notices as of October first about these new exchanges. It changes our COBRA notification because we have to let them know that they have an exchange option as well as the typical COBRA option. There will be other reporting requirements that will start to come into play. You're going to have to give the federal government all sorts of information so that they can decide whether or not you're in compliance. There are potential anti-discrimination issues. And this is still really unknown, how this is going to play out. But when the law was passed, the federal government said that the same kind of anti-discrimination rules that apply to retirement plans are going to be applied to health plans. So, if you're familiar at all, you can't treat highly compensated employees vastly differently in retirement and give them a better retirement system than you can other employees. You're lower paid, there's, you know, there's a corridor in which you have to be. So, we don't know quite what that means in healthcare. But we know that they're now going to apply some type of rules like that. And the federal government said that they would put out more guidance on those rules in two thousand and eleven. And we're still waiting that guidance. But that guidance could be dramatic. It could say that every single employee in your district has to have health coverage, employer contribution towards health coverage in a fairly narrow band. And we tend, as schools, to have one system for our administrators, another system for our teachers, and a third system for our support staff. So, we don't know yet whether we can continue to have those different categories of employees or not. This is a national issue. There's a lot of input on this issue, which is why I think that has been delayed. But the thing to realize about the anti-discrimination is, we can't be really bold in doing different things that might trigger this. We can continue doing what we're doing, but if you start doing something new that might trigger this, you could be in trouble. Oops, I didn't really want to go yet. Is a potential concern around buyouts if you are cash in lieu of, if you say to your employees, if you don't, we'll give you some money if you don't take health insurance, then have you really offered them health insurance? Because what the federal government will see is they have a higher salary, but not health coverage available through you. Now, most likely, they have health coverage somewhere else, so the federal government won't be looking. But if they don't have coverage somewhere else and they're taking your cash, it's potential that you could be seen as not meeting your obligation as an employer to offer health coverage. So, we're also waiting for more guidance on that. If you're a large employer, and I understand that all of your districts are large employers, even Charlotte, which is probably your smaller one. So, if you're a large employer, which all of your districts are, starting January first, two thousand and fifteen, so this is what was delayed a year this summer, but it's still the year you're about to budget for. It's still halfway through the year you're planning for now. As of January first, two thousand and fourteen, all of your school districts have a responsibility to share in health coverage. You either have to offer affordable coverage or pay an employer penalty. You get to sort of choose which way you want to contribute. Give the federal government money or offer affordable coverage. So, what does it mean to offer affordable coverage? And what is the penalty? And what's the chance? And how do you know whether what you are doing now is already good or whether you have to change something or incur a penalty? So, the offer of coverage is the ability of your employees to enroll in your plan. You have to allow the employee and their dependents to enroll. You don't have to allow the spouse to enroll at this time. It has nothing to do with whether or not you, as an employer, pay for it. But you must offer coverage to employees who work at least thirty hours a week. And for some school districts, this is a big deal. For some, this is not a big deal at all. But we don't all offer people at thirty hours health insurance across the state. We may say thirty-two hours you have to work to get health coverage. And I forget, Bob, I know, I think I asked this question, but do you have many people in this category that you're aware of, the thirty hours that you're not offering coverage to?
No.
Okay. But I will speak to what it means if you don't offer them coverage. And I'm not going to go through the flow chart, but this is what that penalty document is referring to. So, if you don't offer coverage to someone who works thirty hours, and the working thirty hours is, they have a reasonable expectation of working thirty hours a week during the school year. You don't get to say, well, they don't work, they work zero in the summer. So, if you average it out, they go below the thirty. You just look at their school year. If you don't offer it, then you're subject to a penalty if several things happen. They have to go into the Vermont Health Connect to get their health insurance. If they get their health insurance somewhere else or don't get health insurance, then there's no penalty. If they go into Vermont Health Connect to get the health insurance because you didn't offer it and you should have, and they qualified for federal help in buying those health plans, that's when you, as the employer, are subject to the penalty. And the penalty for not offering is three, two thousand dollars for every full-time employee you have, minus the first thirty, every year. So, if you had a hundred employees, thirty of them sort of get knocked off, but you still have seventy full-time employees, that's a hundred and forty thousand dollars every year that you give to the federal government. That doesn't help you educate your kids. It doesn't help you attract and compensate your employees. So, that's not a penalty that you want to incur. Sounds like you don't have to worry about it. Coverage. We all in Vermont, our plans offer good coverage. You've heard about this in the news, too. President Obama says that one of the reasons they're closing some of these plans, and they're not going to be able to continue to offer them, is that they've been kind of lousy plans. They don't cover a lot of stuff. And so, in order to be a plan that's qualified under the A C A, you have to provide maternity care. You have to provide emergency care. There's a lot of things you have to cover. And that's why a lot of these plans are closing. In Vermont, you don't have to worry about it. All V I H I plans, all Vermont Health Connect plans meet this requirement. So, your coverage has to be affordable. Well, how do you know if your coverage is affordable? It's affordable if the employee contributes no more than nine and a half percent of their household income towards the premium of the least expensive plan you offer. Now, I'm going to unpack that. Before I do, I just want to remind you that this is in flux. And a few weeks ago, or in September, I would have told you that the aim of the federal government is to actually have more, remember, the goal is to have as many people as possible have access to affordable health coverage. So, the fact that this is defined based on a single plan, and the least expensive single plan, was sort of a compromise. That there were people who really wanted everybody to be able to have access to a family plan and not necessarily the cheapest family plan. And that the direction over time, if the country is successful, would be to make this more stringent. Now, with everything that's gone on, I'm not sure how fast this law will move in that direction. I think that now, we just have to get over the hump of getting people enrolled. But this is the affordability test now. It doesn't mean it's the affordability test in three years. So, the affordability test means that you have to look at your employees' household income, which you don't know. But you know that what you pay them is either equal to or less than their household income. They can't make less than what you pay them. And so, the first thing that you can do is you can look at the threshold of, do we pay them enough? So, that when I look at what they pay towards their premium, not of the plan they're enrolled in, which might be the... they're enrolled in, which might be the JY family plan, which is your most expensive choice. But what if they were enrolled in your least expensive single plan? Does it pass that test? And if it passes the test, you're fine. If it doesn't pass the test, well, they still may have, it still may be affordable because they may have other household income that pushes over that threshold. If it's not affordable, again, what would cause a penalty to you as large employers? Well, they have to leave your plan, whatever it is that you've put out there. They just leave it on the table and say, "I'm going to go into the Vermont Health Connect and get my health care there." And they have to qualify for federal help and get that federal help in buying their plan. Then the federal government says, "Why did we give money to somebody who has an employer, whose employer should have helped them?" Well, now as an employer, you're penalized again. But this time, the penalty is $3,000 for each person that triggers that. So it may be just $3,000 if this is triggered for just one person. And that may be a penalty that is worth taking. It may actually be a win-win because the employee has federal help now in buying their health plan, which may put them better off, and you're paying less than you would have paid to not only offer them affordable coverage, but raise the whole class of employees because you can't just treat one person differently than another. So those are the penalty requirements that that sheet goes over. So there are four cost implications in the Affordable Care Act that you need to be aware of. There's the penalties that I'll touch on again, but I basically just went through. If you as large employers don't offer affordable health coverage, you have potential for penalties. Those penalties start to accrue in January of 2015, but the bill won't come due until 2016 because, like most things with the government, like when we file our taxes, you know, there's a lag time between when you give your information and when you true up. So you don't have to worry about any penalty until your FY '16 budget. But if you're trying to avoid a penalty and you're trying to offer affordable health coverage to do so, you need to do that by January of 2015, and that is something that you need to think about in this budget. So there's penalties. There's newly eligible, and there's waivers, and then there's an excise tax. So the newly eligible applies to large employers. It's for those people that work 30 hours. 30 hours is full-time for health care under the federal law. That's new. And the discrimination issue comes in. If you currently say, "Well, at 32 hours, I prorate your health coverage," we don't know whether that would be allowed to continue in the future, but you can continue it now. The thing you have to worry about around 30 hours is that substitutes and bus drivers, there are groups of employees that you might think don't fall into this category that do. So you have a bus driver, and you hire them to work 20 hours a week, but they have field trips and sporting events, and there may be one bus driver that does that a lot. And when you actually start looking at their hours, they may cross the 30-hour-a-week threshold. It's a reasonable expectation. Substitutes who go to the same school day after day, because it doesn't, you know, we're an SU, and we start to think of ourselves as an SU, and we think about that substitute that's working across our SU. You're each a distinct employer. You don't meld your bucket. So if you have a sub that one day's in Charlotte, and another day in Heinsberg, and another day in Shelburne, those don't all add up to 30 hours. But if you have a substitute that's coming into the building day after day for these short sub assignments, they may have to be offered health coverage. They may meet the 30 hours. And you've never counted their hours. You've just given them a daily stipend. And so one of the challenges that Bob and Cindy know is that there may be some employees that you have to actually, for the next year, track their actual hours so that by next December, you know whether they did indeed cross over that threshold during the year. If so, you need to offer them, make the offer of coverage by next mid-December so they can be enrolled in January if they choose, in order to avoid that offer of coverage penalty. You get to actually track it for a year and base it on real data. So that's something that they're working on. Waivers. These are people who don't currently take health coverage. And I think Cindy said there's a few of them in each district, but not a tremendous amount. People who are young and still on their parents' plan, they're on their spouse's plan, they like the cash, and they're invincible and think that they don't need health coverage. For whatever reason, they don't take your health coverage. Well, the Affordable Care Act is potentially going to trigger changes in people's behavior. Because now, if they don't have health coverage, they're going to have a penalty. And they don't, might say, "Well, if I have to pay a penalty, I'd rather get health coverage." We don't know. Again, the penalty starts out small, so this kind of population might take some time to play out. Late in the summer, you might have heard that UPS dropped spousal coverage. So you're not required to provide spousal coverage under the Affordable Care Act at this time. So they said that they would no longer pay for spousal health coverage if the spouse had access to coverage somewhere else. So you may see spouses coming, and your employees coming back on. They were taking cash in lieu of, because they could get free health care with their spouse. Now they can't. Now they come back. What is that going to do to your budget? That's something that you need to think about. Penalties, I talked about, about the potential for that. The fourth potential budget impact for us as schools is a 2018 excise tax. It was originally called the Cadillac Tax. And this is a funding stream for the federal government. There are at least three funding streams that they have in place in order to make this work. One of them is the individual penalty. So you either pay into the system by buying health care, or you pay a penalty. The other is the employer mandate. You either pay into the system by offering coverage or you pay a penalty. And the third is the excise tax. It's a little bit like the excess spending threshold in that, once you go over a certain line, you pay double when you get above that line. It's the same idea. And in this book, which I know you don't all have, but there's a chart. It's not very exciting, but it looks like this. In 2010, the threshold was set. So this threshold is for a single plan. And the government decided that any single plan that cost over, about, just over $10,000 in premium for that plan was an excessively witch health plan. So over $10,000 for the single plan. None of our plans are at that line yet. Here's where our plans stack up. The JY plan is the closest to the line because it's the most expensive. And the VHP, which is our most popular plan, which most people are on, is, you know, down here. This is at this year's rate. We know that we're estimating maybe a 4.5% increase next year in the premium costs. So then you crank that up 4.5%, and every year, they're going to go up. This line was set in 2010, and it just stays until 2018. Now, anything can happen. The federal government can change the rules. And there's a small amount of wiggle room of that line to either go up and down based upon some factors. But as a rule, we expect it to stay pretty much where it is. And then it rises according to inflation, which pretty much is lower than the cost of health increases. So as our V-HI plans get more expensive, and the Vermont Health Connect plans, or a plan with Blue Cross, every plan offered in the state, it's not just V-HI plans that would get impacted, when the premium goes above that line, the value above the line, so if it was an $11,000 plan and it's a $10,000 line, then you'd have a $400 tax. You have a 40% tax of the value of the premium. So it'd be $400 for every person in that plan that you would, again, pay to the federal government to help them fund their system, not help you fund your system. So that's not a tax that we want to pay. It is, our JY plan is our, and you still have people in JY?
A few.
Is our most expensive plan. That will cross the line first. We at V-HI will do what we can to drag that process out as long as possible, but we have other financial pressures as well. So that's something that you need to be aware of. 2018 sounds like a long way off, but it's really not. And you need to be aware of it and start to have conversations and negotiations with your employees because the way that I at least look at the Affordable Care Act is, these costs, these additional costs, if any, on our districts are not costs because we've made decisions as school boards about the staffing levels, or the program, or what we're trying to accomplish. We get that those are our responsibility to put into our budget. We also know that, we also always have variables in healthcare. People whose children grow up and move out of the house, and move from family to two-person plans. People who get married and move from single to two-person. People who have babies. So we've always known that there's, we have to put in a cushion in our healthcare line because we don't know what will happen. But this is different. So if we have significant budget increases because of an excise tax or federal rules and regulations, I don't think it's the school board's problem alone, or challenge alone, to figure out how to deal with. I think it's the challenge of us and our staff to try to figure out, how do we manage these, and our communities. And so that's why we need to start thinking about this, because it takes time to have those conversations. So there is support for the Affordable Care Act implementation. V-HI, so I had the good fortune of joining Visbit and V-HI right as all of this was sort of coming together. And I was told that before this, V-HI was really easy to run. It's fun, but it's not easy. So we learned pretty early that this law was too complex for Mark Hage and Joe Zimmerman and myself to really manage, and get you the information that you needed. And every time we asked questions, we found that people didn't know the answers. And sometimes, we knew more than they did, and we knew we didn't know much. So that was pretty scary. And we managed to connect Visbit as a partnership with Gallagher with our multiline program. And I was speaking to someone from that company, saying what I just told you about how hard to get answers. And they said they had a health team. They're specialists in healthcare. They're specialists in schools. And they've spent the last couple of years assuming that the Supreme Court would uphold the law, and there would be a lot of people that would need help. And while everybody else was sort of, "Let's wait and see," they were working on it. And so we've partnered with them, and they have been an excellent resource. And that resource is free to you. So any question that any of you have around, "What does this mean?" or "Can we do this?" and "What would happen?" They will answer. They have 20 compliance attorneys. They're not your legal team, but they will give you a good sense of whether this is a road that you should pursue, or where the hazards are. We also have lots of information on our website, and we are constantly talking to the central office and letting them know as things unfold. The other tool that we have that you are all just starting to take advantage of is cost modeling for large employers. So one of the things that we said is, well, so how many, do I offer affordable health coverage right now with what I'm doing? How many newly eligible people do I have? How many waiver people do I have? What's the chance of those newly eligible and those waiver actually coming on my health plan, you know, because they might have coverage somewhere else, or all those things? What happens if I just drop health coverage and get out of it altogether, which was a common refrain that you heard a couple of years ago, and that you might get at town meeting? Have you thought of just dropping health coverage? So those are the questions we felt people needed answers to, and they needed answers that were statistically valid, as opposed to just, "Well, you know, let's just put in this number." So we spent a lot of time with Gallagher. First, we had to teach them what a supervisor union was. We had to explain what Vermont was doing, what V-HI was, what grandfathered status was, what the Cattamount assessment was that Vermont's had in place for years that if you had to pay some money if you haven't offered health coverage. And they developed a modeling tool for large employers. And it cost V-HI $4,000 to Gallagher every time a school uses it. Nobody uses it. We don't pay them anything. And we did some beta testing, and we asked that every large employer that wants to use it invest $1,000 towards that. And we're picking up the rest of it, the other $3,000. And we wanted an investment for a couple of reasons. We wanted to make sure it was worth it. If you didn't think it was worth putting in $1,000, and we're talking large schools that have hundreds of thousands of dollars per year in health coverage, then we didn't want to spend the money to do it on your behalf. We also know that if you don't give us good data, we won't give you a good report. And when you have a little skin in the game, you tend to be a little bit more thoughtful of how you fill out the data. So Bob has signed you guys up for it, right?
Very close, yes.
Yep, or at least thinking about doing it. And you will get, and you can pull the plug, until we produce the report, you can change your mind. But we've done, we've had, oh, 40 large districts request it. I think we've had a dozen now complete it. And they've all said that it's been very helpful. You'll end up, so Cindy gets the great job of entering census data, all of your employees, what you pay them, what health plan they're on, how much they pay towards it, whether you offer cash in lieu of. So that all of that information is in there. They run it through a statistical modeling system and put it through 1,000 different scenarios, and come up with what's the most statistically predictable average of what your budget impact could be. So that, and then they say, "Remember, in 2015, it would be a half-year impact because the law doesn't kick in until halfway through." And it gives you a number, and it shows you sort of what the range of scenarios came out, so that you have some sense of what you might want to start budgeting for this, even though none of us really know how it plays out, and the federal government can change anything on us at any time. But we need to go in there with some educated understanding of what it means, and we need to sit down at the bargaining table and be able to say, "This is the potential budget impact." And the average so far has been about a 5% increase in health costs, just because of the Affordable Care Act. That's in addition to the 4.5% rate increase for budgeting. That's been what seems to have been coming out, and we're following those trends. So this is a V-HI-sponsored report. So the union gets the access to that information as well, because the union is part of V-HI. And we think that's a really good thing. Because what happens at the bargaining table is challenging enough without arguing about what the data is. And so we are giving you data that we all agree is the best data that we can come up with, and then you can decide what you do about that data. So that is something that, the report is delivered by a webinar, and you can sign into it from any place, so you don't all have to be in the same room. The union needs to be invited. You all should be invited. You can then listen in at the webinar, get the report, go through your data. We also have a generic webinar. So if you missed that one, it's going to be posted on our website later this week. You can just go watch a webinar that walks through a large school report, even though it won't talk about your data. And so if you leave and you want to refresh it, you can go back and look at it. So that's available to help because we felt that those were questions that we would want answered and that you would probably want answered. So I haven't even talked about Vermont yet, because Vermont has added its own take on the Affordable Care Act. And as you know, if you've paid attention, Governor Shumlin has made it clear that he hopes to create a single payer system called Green Mountain Care that will kick in in 2017. So his vision is that all Vermonters will have health insurance just because we're Vermonters. It doesn't come through our employment. We all pay in towards that system based upon our income in some manner yet to be determined. He has acknowledged that there would be a payroll tax on employers. So in that system, you wouldn't offer health care anymore, and you wouldn't pay for health care anymore in the way you do now. There wouldn't be a V-HI anymore, or a Blue Cross, or an MVP in Vermont. Instead, everybody would have health insurance. You'd pay in through some kind of payroll tax. We'd all pay in as individuals. The federal money would come into the system, and we'll have Green Mountain Care. We don't know whether that will be successful. We do know that in 2015, the legislature needs to approve a funding mechanism for single payer. If they succeed, we're probably 95% of the way there. If they don't succeed, then we'll see. Whether it's delayed or put off the table, there's elections between now and then, we don't know. But that's the vision for Vermont. So when the Affordable Care Act came, they saw the exchange as an important sort of stepping stone to get to that vision. And so what the legislature did was actually close the insurance market, or part of the insurance market, starting in January. So in Vermont, the only state in the country that has done this, the only place to get health coverage as an individual or a small employer, which you are not, in January is through the Vermont Health Connect. Blue Cross cannot sell you a plan. MVP cannot sell you a plan. You have to get it through the Vermont Health Connect. So that they're really starting to build this one healthcare pool in Vermont to move towards single payer. When that happened, the thought was that all the small schools in the state would be going in be going into the exchange in January or in July because the state did recognize that people would wait till their plan renewed and go in when their plan renewed. And that's when Joe and Mark said, but, we have grandfathered plans and, and that's a federal designation. And so, doesn't that mean that our schools could keep their plans if they want to? And after some discussions with the state, they recognized that, yes, that was true. So, most school districts in Vermont, all public schools except for one, very small one, have either only grandfathered plans or a mixture. And we're actually putting in the mail on Friday, an updated letter that will tell you where you are, but you have, all your plans are grandfathered. In fact, I think you're one of the only ones that that's actually really true for. There's a, there's a lot of issues that have these sort of empty plans that nobody's been in for years that still are technically out there that aren't grandfathered, that have to close. But I think you guys are one of the few that are like clean, so you're good.
Really clean.
So, that means for small schools with Vhi grandfathered plans, they could go into the exchange, but they don't have to. And for you as large employers, you don't even have the option of going into the exchange until 2017 or 2016. And I actually, you may have some that are in that middle ground between 50 and 100. And I didn't acknowledge that in this presentation. So, grandfathered plans. You've got grandfathered plans. What does that mean? Well, the first thing you should know is that even though it's not first up here, it's really nice right now if you're a small school district to have a grandfathered plan and realize that you don't have to worry with the Vermont Health Connect. You can let it get through all the bugs and the kinks and you can wait until everybody else does the learning curve and then go in. But it's limiting to employers. And we, that's become more evident as time has gone on. You can't drop a plan without violating grandfathered status. Because the whole idea is that you have to stay in a, in a box and you can't disadvantage your employees. And if you force them out of one plan into another plan, it is most likely going to be considered disadvantaging them to a degree that you've lost grandfathered status. You can't add a new Vhi plan. So, if you wanted to add our high deductible plan, it's new to you, so it's not grandfathered. And the biggest challenge is that premium cost share. You know, as I said, most of us have been trying to shift some more cost share onto the employees for their health premium even if we bargain salary increases as a result of that. You can only change from five percentage points from where you were when the law was signed in March of 2010 forever. So, if you were paying for 90% of the premium in 2010, you can go down to paying, or you can go to paying 85% of the premium, but that's it forever. And some school districts are right up against it. Now, this may not be that important for large employers. Because if you were to lose your grandfathered status right now, you don't have to go into the exchange. Because the way the state law is written is only in 2014, this first year, you have to be 50 or smaller, 50 or fewer employees in order to go in. In 2016, and that's what I didn't put on this slide for you, you may have some schools, Charlotte maybe in the 50 to 100 category.
We're debating that, yeah.
So, you've got some entities that may be between 50 and 100 employers, tho, employees. Those districts would be required to go in in 2016 unless you kept your grandfathered plans. But right now, for 100 or more employees, there is no state requirement that you ever have to do anything right now. And if you ask the state why, it's because we're going to have the Green Mountain Care. It's going to take away health care. And if that doesn't happen, will they require large employers to go in the exchange? We don't know. But, you know, you need to think about whether the restrictions of grandfathered status are important to you or not. And only you can really answer that. You can offer Vhi plans and the exchange plans in 2017 or possibly 2016, depending on your size, when they're available to you. And you need to understand your options about the exchange. How does Vhi compare? Will the exchange meet expectations? How is the Vermont Health Connect different? That's where this guide comes into play. So, we felt this was Vhi. We felt it was important that schools and their employees have accurate answers to those questions. How does Vhi compare to Vermont Health Connect? So, we created this guide. As I said, it's on our website. It's a PDF. You can download it. One of the things that I want to talk about before I get into this a little bit more because I sometimes forget is how the exchange is different. If you choose to go into the exchange or if you're required at some point to go into the exchange and single payer doesn't materialize, this is how it works. You're going to have to move to a calendar year. Everyone is going to have to renew their health plan in January 1st every year going forward. So, the first year you go in, you either have a short year or a long year. And then you'll get to the point where in the middle of your budget year, your premiums will change. And when you set your budget, you might think it's frustrating now not knowing what the Vhi rate's going to be, but you'll end up with a final rate before you finalize your budget. And now, you'll be knowing six months and sort of guessing the other six months. So, that's just information. The other thing is, there are more choices for employees. It's set up in the following manner. As an employer, when you go into the website, you give all your employer information so they know who you are. You give your list of employees so they know who they are. You can group your employees. You can say, here's, I have administrators, I have teachers, I have support staff. So, you can create employee groups at this point. And then, you make only a couple of decisions. And those decisions really will have been made at the bargaining table and you will just enter those decisions. So, one decision you make is, will you offer family coverage or only single coverage or, you know, something in between? I think most schools offer the family coverage and will probably continue to do so. The other thing you decide is, will you limit insurance carriers or not? So, we have Blue Cross and MVP are the two insurance carriers in the exchange. And you can either say, you can only pick Blue Cross plans, you can only pick MVP plans, or you can make that open. Then, the final decision will be, what is you, as an employer, contribute towards the health costs? And you'll give a monthly amount of money. You can either say, I will pay a percentage of one of the plans, or you can say, I will pay $300. But even if you say, I'll pay a percentage of one of the plans, that'll be calculated to a dollar amount. You'll then tell, you'll be done. Your employees will be told, it's time to pick your health plan. They'll go in and they'll either see nine or 18 insurance plans. If you pick just Blue Cross, they'll see Blue Cross's nine plans. If you picked MVP, they'll see MVP's nine plans. If you said it doesn't matter, you'll see all 18 plans. Then they'll have a dollar amount, some money, and they can buy any of those plans. They don't, you don't say, I'm paying, you know, 80% of the dual option and you have a choice between the dual option or you can buy up to the JY or whatever we have in our contracts. You just say, here's your money, you pick any plan you want. So, there's more choice. There's also more education that's needed because sometimes, choice is a scary thing. So, we need to think of grandfathered status as a bridge, not an island. You can't keep grandfathered status for long. It's not meant to be sustainable by the federal government. It was really meant to be the fine print under President Obama's statement, if you like your health plan, you can keep it. And because in Vermont, they have closed the small association market and Vhi is only operating because we have grandfathered plans and we have schools too big to go in. That's the only reason we're operating. We can't make adjustments to compete with the exchange because of grandfathered status. So, you're either eventually going to leave us and go into the Vermont Health Connect or we're all going into single payer together. So, there are three things that people look at, and this is what's gone over in this guide when it comes to health insurance. We all do it personally and our employees do it. Can I see my doctor? Is it covered? And how much does it cost me? So, can I see my doctor? Networks. The networks that Vhi has and the networks in the Vermont Health Connect are very similar. There's even a little bit more enhancement in Vermont Health Connect and the guide goes over that. But there's definitely not a downside from the can I see my doctor point of view. The Vermont Health Connect actually has more coverage than Vhi because it's added pediatric, dental, and vision. And because all preventative services have no out-of-pocket whatsoever, which is if you're in Vhi, you still have to pay your copay even if it's a preventative service. So, you get that. The cost sharing is where things are really different. It's more than premiums. All we've talked about is premiums, premiums, premiums. What's the premium? Who shares the premium? We need to start unfortunately to know more about insurance. The premiums are generally lower on the Vermont Health Connect because the out-of-pocket costs are higher. And when you buy insurance, and you can think of your car insurance, you can pay a lower premium and get a higher deductible. Or you might want a lower deductible and a higher premium. And I don't know about you, but when I had teenage sons in the house, I picked the higher premium and the lower deductible because I was going to have a claim. And so, I wanted that deductible to kick in. And now that they're out of the house, I'd rather have a lower premium and a higher deductible because I don't think, I'm taking a bet, I'm not going to have a claim. When you pay premium dollars, if you never use the system, it's gone. It's money that's not available to you. And when you pay Vhi, it's not gone in that if we don't need it, it's still your money and we reinvest it in you in some way, either through next year's premium or wellness or we used to give it back in checks. But it's still not money you can use to fund your education system. So, there's an advantage sometime to say, I'd rather have a lower premium and a higher deductible or a higher out-of-pocket if I don't think I'm going to need it. And this has been a public policy decision to have higher deductibles and higher out-of-pocket costs on these exchanges. Because there's a sense that people who don't have to really spend money to access health care will access health care less wisely and less thoughtfully. So, this has been a public policy decision. So, you need to recognize that you can't just say, oh, look, the premium is lower. That's a good deal without saying, oh, but the out-of-pocket costs are higher. That needs to be part of the conversation. You also have to look at medical maximums, prescription maximums, and how can you manage these higher deductibles? Because we do have HRAs, we have HSAs, there are FSAs. So, there are mechanisms to help manage higher deductibles that we need to start having conversations about as we look at that. So, in the Vermont Health Connect and in all of the national exchanges, we have metal levels because it was based on Massachusetts. And Massachusetts, I had Governor Romney who had just come off the Salt Lake City Olympics, so we had gold, silver, and bronze. They added a platinum. I don't know who did that. But, there are four metal levels. So, in Vermont Health Connect, you can buy a platinum, gold, silver, or bronze plan. And basically, it's, it's talking about how much are you putting in the premium versus how much is in the out-of-pocket. So, a platinum plan, about 90% of all your health costs are factored into that premium. It's the highest premium. And you have about 10% of out-of-pocket costs to kick in before the system takes back over and pays the rest of your health care. Gold is 80/20, silver 70/30, and bronze is 60/40. You need to know that the federal government, if they help you as an individual buy a plan, they help you buy a silver plan. So, that's the federal benchmark. They'll help you buy a silver plan. So, how do Vhi plans look? Well, the VHP, the Vermont Health Plan, our most popular plan, that 85% of all of our members are in, is a platinum plus. That means that I think it's about 95, 96% of the plan costs are part of the premium. There's almost no out-of-pocket costs. There's a, there's a copay every time you go to the doctor that never stops. So, if you go to the doctor 1,000 times, you pay it 1,000 times. But there's no deductible. There's very little out-of-pocket costs. Same with the JY plan. The 300 comp is a platinum because there is some deductible. And our two high deductible plans are gold. So, we now have, for the first time, a way to compare Vhi to a new system. And what we see is that we have the most generous plans in the state. You can't get these plans from Blue Cross. They only come through Vhi. If you went and tried to buy them, they said they just don't exist. They exist only through Vhi. They're the most generous plans. Employees love them. Why wouldn't you? Because you know that you don't have to worry about health costs. And we know now that not only do we offer the most generous plans in the state, but that we pay most of the premium on those plans. Now, we bargained that usually at a lower salary. It's not like we have the most generous salaries in the country and the most generous health care benefits, but it's easier to control salaries than it is health care. When we gave you a 10% increase last year, what do you do? You just have to figure out how to pay it. And you bore most of that. Whereas salaries, you never just have a 10% increase in salary unless you negotiated it. So, there was a time where health benefits were low cost, so it made sense to put it there. But now, we're finding it's harder to control our budgets if we bear most of the risk for health costs as employers. And I think it's time, and VSBA would like to make this a statewide conversation and is trying to, what is the appropriate employer contribution for public schools towards our employee health plans? And maybe it's not 85% of a platinum plus plan. Maybe it's something else. And maybe there's salary that offsets that. But as we start to think about that, just remember, single payer. Because if we move to single payer, the health care costs are going to come out of your budget and you're going to be taxed on your salary. So, if you spend the next couple of years trying to shift to less health benefits instead of more salary and then end up with the health benefits taken out of your budget and a tax on salary, that may not have been a good move. You also can't move very far in Vhi because of grandfathered status unless you don't care about grandfathered status and figure you'll move, you'll lose grandfathered status, you still have a couple of years because of your size, and then you'll wait and see what the future brings. Vhi had to do some changing. We, because they closed the small association market as of January, we had to reconfigure ourselves under state law. We've become an I-90-1 compliant organization, which means that we are now a twin to Visbit and the Vermont League of Cities and Towns. We were not before. We just had our first new board convened yesterday. We now have a five-member board. The union has two seats on it, but they are a minority. And the majority of the board are school representatives. We have a superintendent, Tracy Rend, a business manager, Martha Gagnar, and a school board member, Bruce Smith. So, they get to lead Vhi and answer the question, how can Vhi continue to serve schools going forward? Does it make sense for Vhi to continue in the same way? There's a lot of questions for that board to answer. You were asked to sign new member agreements. They were required by the state and I believe that you did that. But you need to know that your membership in Vhi is voluntary and with 90 days' notice, you can leave us. So, if you decide that you want to negotiate to something different, you don't have to worry about being stuck. We're not like Verizon where you sign a three-year contract with big fees. There's a lot of organizations committed to supporting schools through this transition because what we know now is that we can look at what we've been offering health care in, for health care benefits in a different light. We have some new options, although they're not immediately available to you. We have some national and state public policy decisions going on that make us look at health care differently. And Visbit, who I'm here actually representing tonight, School Boards Association, Vhi. Vhi's goal is to give cost-neutral information. I don't have to have that cost-neutral perspective when I'm here as Visbit. The superintendents, VASBO, the labor attorneys, the, our partnership with Gallagher, there's lots of resources available to you. As you negotiate contracts, it's important, more important now than ever to have really good expertise at the table and supporting you behind the scenes. We've been meeting with all the school labor attorneys to keep them up to speed because this is going to change business as usual. So, what are sort of the takeaways that you should know as school board members? Expect the superintendent and business manager to understand the potential implications on your FY15 budget. Know if your coverage is affordable. Do you have the newly eligibles? Are you seeing movement from the waiver populations? They need to be thinking about that. You need to start tracking any of those employees hovering around 30 hours a week and make sure you know whether or not you should be offering them coverage. Not offering coverage is not an acceptable penalty to absorb. So, you don't want to miss that. Before making policy changes, you need to beware of potential discrimination issues. So, if you have to offer them... So if you have to offer them, you might want to say, "Well, we have to offer it, but offering doesn't mean we have to pay for it, so we'll just offer it." But then you're discriminating because you're treating them differently from anybody else. And discrimination penalties are $100 per employee per day until you fix the problem. You don't want to go that way either. And we don't have enough information now to know what the discrimination rules are going to be. Understand how VHI compares to Vermont Health Connect, even though you're not available till 2017 or perhaps 2016 if you're that middle size. Consider whether or not it's important to remain grandfathered status. It may not be. Your gut reaction shouldn't be, "I'm used to this. I like it. I just want to stay here and make the world go away." It's so much easier. It's not really a good solution. You have to start thinking, "What's the value of grandfathered status?" Right now, even if you weren't grandfathered, you would still be able to stay with VHI because there's no mandate for you to do otherwise. So you need to think about that value. You need to consider that maybe you wait till see what happens in 2015 to funding single payer because if that is coming, do you want to disrupt the system twice or do you just want to have one change? And how do you plan for that? Think about what is the appropriate employer contribution towards health coverage. I think that's the conversation we need to have with our employees, given this new environment. Talk with your community and prepare for negotiations. So that's what I bring to you tonight. I think I'm even five minutes under the time.
Perfect timing, Laura.
So if there are some questions, I would be happy to field them.
So we have about five minutes because we need to have an executive session related to negotiations before our seven o'clock meeting. I'm sure there are a few questions of board members. Anyone? It was very comprehensive and thank you, Laura. Yeah, and if anyone wants to go back, just a reminder that it's available on RETN. People can go to this particular presentation and find it. And if you want to send a link to somebody, that was probably a welcome for some people. Questions for Laura? Kristin?
Do we have an obligation just once a year to determine eligibility if they're working 30 hours or if they are out of spouse's plan?
Yes. So if you don't know the answer to whether or not they're eligible for health coverage because of the hours they work, you're required to measure. You can have this measurement period, and once you measure for the year, you either determine yes or no. And for the next year, they either have to be offered or don't have to be offered coverage.
And if something changes, you know they got divorced?
It doesn't matter. Well, that's a different -- that's a qualifying event. So if their hours change, so if you say, "No, I don't have to offer you coverage. You're under 30 hours." And the next week, they go over 30 hours in the same job, you don't have to offer them coverage for the next year. But you have to be measuring them that whole year and for the next year. So you actually track regular hours. You can still change for qualifying events. So if in the middle of the year, somebody's divorced and loses access to health coverage, they don't have to wait for an open enrollment period. They're eligible to go on health insurance the beginning of the next month. That stays the same. So this waiver population or their husband or wife's employer dropping coverage in the middle of the year could impact you in the middle of the year.
I meant more, can we get penalized if we're not actively looking for that information from employees? That there's some change and so you should have been offering?
You would have already offered that class of employees something anyway. They might ought have taken it, but you should have offered it even if they... So a divorce or a change in life is a different topic than should you have offered them health coverage. And you are -- it is your responsibility as employers to comply with the law. The fact that no one's asked you to prove it yet doesn't mean that you don't have to comply with the law.
Thank you.
Yes.
Could you clarify the grandfathered situation? I thought I heard you say you could stay grandfathered. And then I heard you say you can't stay grandfathered.
So under federal law, you can stay grandfathered, as the federal law is written now, forever if you stay in a box. So VHI has to behave because we control a lot of that box. So if we at VHI decided that we didn't want to offer grandfathered plans anymore for some reason, we have the ability to take those away from you without your permission. You'd have to go through the board. Most health insurance companies in Vermont took away the grandfathered option from small employers without asking them whether they liked that or not. But VHI will not, I will make a commitment to you, make that decision without your input and without you having an understanding of why we're doing it and when we're doing it and what it means for you. But even if VHI stays in the box, you can do things that would violate grandfathered status. Change the premium cost share more than 5% from what it was in 2010, close a plan, add a different plan. And at some point, those are going to be too restrictive for you to want to stay. These plans are frozen in time forever. One of the ways that VHI controls premium increases is by looking at copays and deductibles. We can't increase copays and deductibles anymore forever because if we do, we'll violate grandfathered status. At some point, that doesn't work. So unless there's a change in law, grandfathered status at some point is going to be too limiting. It's going to be like a house with the two-pronged outlets in one in a room, you know, when you need three-pronged outlets and you need 70 of them or you need Wi-Fi. So at some point, it's going to become obsolete. We're not there yet, but we have to realize that just because we have grandfathered status and we can technically keep it, doesn't mean that that's the best thing to do.
That's a great, almost closing question, but we'll have one more question.
And I can be reached by email with any kind of questions, either laura@visbit.org. So don't hesitate if you have a question that you'd like to...
And we may figure out how to funnel questions internally so you don't get bombarded with 34 individual emails.
That's right. I'm used to bombarding.
Okay. Thank you very much, Laura.
Thank you.
That is very helpful.
Thank you.
So we're going to move into another room. We have a motion to go into executive session for negotiations, please, in a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.